Park City Council, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Here.
Councilmember Kostic.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens. Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Circe.
Hey, welcome everyone. Our agenda this evening changes slightly. We are taking the resolution providing for appointments to the Parking Management Task Force out of the consent agenda because there's been some changes to it. Other than that, the agenda stays the same. This is our last meeting, official meeting of 2019. We will have one other meeting on December 11th with our state delegation, which is open to the public, which will start at 7:00 PM. There will be public comments at that meeting, but we're going to have sign up beforehand for that meeting. So if you'd be on the lookout for the sign up for that, but that'll be on December 11th at 7:00 PM. The City Council will re-adjourn in the new year on January 15th. Tonight, we're going to start our meeting with a proclamation recognizing the 125th anniversary of the Tacoma Park Volunteer Fire Department. I will read the proclamation, then I'm actually going to ask Sarah from Councilmember Huckers' office to come up as well, and we can present the proclamations. And so, "Whereas the Tacoma Park Fire Company was established in 1894 after a devastating December 29, 1893 fire that burned the three small businesses that comprised the town's business district. And whereas the company was the first fire service on record in Montgomery County and is the county's oldest continuously operating fire service. And whereas the first hose reel firehouse and a hand-drawn, hand-operated pumping unit were purchased and housed in a log cabin behind Laurel Avenue until 1909. And whereas the Volunteers incorporated in 1922 as the Tacoma Park Volunteer Fire Department. And whereas the Volunteers housed fire equipment in a metal-clad building known as the Tin Shed until they obtained property and built the first fire station on Carroll Avenue at Philadelphia Avenue in 1931. And whereas the building has changed over the years, but the department has been housed there ever since. And whereas the fire department is part of the identity of Tacoma Park, its original building on Carroll Avenue housed a community gym and was an important gathering place for residents, and the current building houses a large community room for meetings, babysitting classes, birthday parties, and other uses. And whereas today, the Tacoma Park Volunteer Fire Department has 134 members, 40 of those are actively serving alongside career fire and rescue personnel at the department. And now therefore, I, Kate Stewart, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, do hereby proclaim and celebrate the Tacoma Park Volunteer Fire Department for providing fire and rescue services to Tacoma Park and surrounding areas without interruption for 125 years." Thank you. Thank you very much. And if you'd like to come up and get the proclamation, and will Sarah bring the county proclamation? We could take a picture. the tree sales will begin on Saturday. So do not forget to buy your Christmas tree. All right, moving on. This evening, we have a number of presentations. We are going to begin with our Police Pension Plan Actuarial Evaluation of June 30, 2019. And I think we're all set for you all, correct? It's nice to see you again. Welcome back.
Oh, wait, your microphone's on. Now you're on. Go ahead.
Yes, I'm Tom Lohman. I've been here before. I've been here since the plan began back in, I don't know, 2001 or so. But with me today is Tom Vicente, so we're going to let Tom do the presentation today for you, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Am I advancing the slides? Or are you?
Yeah, I think you are. Just hit next through.
Enter. There you go. So today's our review of the annual valuation. This year, as an overview before we go into the numbers, that the funding levels improved, which was good. Number of moving parts, we did see a slight uptake in the dollar amount of the required contribution.
Hold on just a second. You're on the top side. See if this helps. A little bit.
So moving on to Slide 4, we just have some background. We know we only do this once a year, so we do like to review the background of the plan. The police employees were originally in the state of Maryland plan, but back in 2001, wanted to really take control of the program and move into a local program, which is what you did at the time. Part of the program, in determining the cost of the program, is a lot of assumptions about what's going to happen in the future. One of the major ones is what type of investment return we'll have for the long term. Back in 2017, we moved from 8%. Well, actually, before that, we moved to 7.5%. And in 2017, we reduced the assumption down to 7.25%. As we'll see, when we look in the pension landscape, that is an overall trend of employers moving that assumption downward as they've seen returns become lower than they had been in the past. And lower inflation is a big part of that. So there is room to move it lower. Lower interest rates result in higher short-term costs, but the assumptions don't actually drive the cost. It's what's really going to happen that drives the cost. The assumption's just how we anticipate the cost developing. So current provisions of the plan. The officers can retire after 25 years of service. They'll have a pension that's about half a pay, 50% of pay at that time. They'll get un-reduced benefits if they have the 25 years of service, but they can retire early with reduced benefits before then. They have a cost of living adjustment annually after they retire, capped at 3%. There is disability benefits, and the employees do contribute 7% of pay. So the employees are paying for a good portion of the benefit. In terms of results this year, the results we put in together for July of 2019, those affect the contributions for your fiscal 2021, so they're a year ahead for the contributions. We calculate them as a percentage of payroll, so it'll be a percentage of whatever the payroll is at that time. This year, the rate increased slightly from 42.85% up to 43.6%. And the main reason for the increase was that there was an increase in payroll for those officers who returned over the course of the year was higher than the anticipated increase, and the investment returns were slightly less than what had been anticipated, the 7.25%. So there were some other offsetting factors, but those are the main drivers for the increase.
If I might just ask, the returning employees means folks who, those are just like regular employees?
Correct.
Not somebody who was off and then came back?
Correct, correct. Those who were both there last year and this year. Our actual cost, for those of you can, you can read that. A lot of numbers on the page. Probably the two important ones are to look at the line that says the unfunded actuarial liability, which is about a third up from the bottom, which is at $8,556,000, which is less than the $9,500,000 it was a year before. So an improvement there, $1 million less than it had been. The other probably important number to look at is at the very last line, which has those contribution rates, the 43.6 versus the 42.85, which we mentioned earlier. So those are the main numbers that come out of it. So funded level did improve, the contribution is a little bit higher, but it's actually, if you showed a third year back, the contribution rate was up around 46% two years ago, dipped down largely because of lower pay increases a year ago, and now they came back a little bit as some of those pay increases caught back up. So you'll have these normal fluctuations, but all within the normal range, nothing really that looks like it's out of the ordinary. So that's the funding results. The other section of the results are the accounting results. So GASB is the Government Accounting Standards Board. These are the numbers you put on your balance sheet and on your financial statements. They don't drive your cash contributions, just what you report out for your financials. And that's what GASB Statement 68 is the standard that applies here. So key results, and these were for your fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, were that the funded level showed $9 million unfunded liability. So a little bit different than what's on the, than what's in the funding rules. There's different factors that come into play that the accountants require you to use for determining your liabilities versus what you use for funding purposes, but a very similar number. Then you have an expense of $1,450,000 for fiscal '19, which is down from the $1,264 from the prior fiscal year. And those are numbers, again, not the cash contributions, these are the expense you would put in against income on the financial statements under the accrual accounting rules. Couple of things just to keep you aware of that are going on in the pension world. As we mentioned earlier, there is a continuing, though slow, adoption of more conservative assumptions, so lower interest rates, higher levels of salary increases, things of that nature. More focus on disclosure of risks. So in our full actuary report, ASOP stands for Actual Standards of Practice. The actuaries have come together and said, "We need to disclose more about the risk volatility." So in the full actuary report, we disclose that there. You know, around the country, outside of Maryland primarily, there's a lot of plans that have a lot of difficulties, that make the headlines a lot, states like New Jersey and Illinois. So those are places that draw a lot of attention, and then you have a lot of rules that come out of those places that are not doing quite as well. Lot of benefit design change litigation going on as well. The last bullet is a new one for this year, so the Society of Actuaries does a lot of research, and they publish mortality tables, how long are people going to live, which we then use to factor into your results. This year, for the first time, they published a table based strictly on public sector employer results, and they actually had a cut that was based just on public safety employees. That'd be germane to this group. So this really was just finalized in the winter, in February or March of this year is when it was finalized. So it's still a bit too early for us to put that in, but we will want to look at that and just see how it compares to what we're using for your group, and see if there's any reason to adopt it or not adopt it. It's a new data point. It's a fresh data point, so there's a lot of reasons to adopt that. It'll probably mean, when we look at it, that it's going to show that over long-term, public safety folks are living a little bit longer than maybe have been anticipated previously. And so there may be a sharp, a slight uptick in liabilities because of that. But again, we're just trying to recognize what's going to happen. We're not causing it to happen. But it's important, it's important to recognize it in advance because it's easier to pay for it if you recognize it in advance than it is if you recognize it after it's already This is just a table from the Najra study they release every year. It gives you a sense, it's sort of a busy chart, but it gives you a sense of what's happening with assumptions out there with, in terms of long-term rates of return. And the thing to look at is in the, where the line is on the far right. This is looking at large state plans as well as large city plans. And what it's saying is that the median employer in all those very large theoretically sophisticated systems have a median expected return on assets of 7.25%, which is what you're using. A year ago, that was at 7.48. So it is coming down, and we're seeing, when you look across from left to right, you can see that the size of the bars from the bottom are getting wider, and the ones at the top are getting narrower, showing that there is a movement toward more conservative assumptions. And that's something that we do expect to continue to happen as folks look at what's happening in the world and what their expected return is long-term. So maybe something we'll want to keep an eye on here, and possibly going forward, you know, with due thought and consideration, you know, should there be some sort of an adjustment here as well. But it gives you a sense of what's going on in the world, so you're not just in your own, your own space. And that's really it for our presentation for today. I don't know if there's any questions or comments.
Okay. Thank you. Any council comments or questions? I know, it's like...
Yeah, they always had questions for me, so I guess...
I know. Wow, he's very thorough.
They started lurking back there, Tom, so they went...
Yeah, I'll just ask one thing.
Yeah.
So one question. Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. One of the things that often comes up in these situations is when you look at the unfunded liability, and I know there are plenty of people who advocate for setting aside, you know, the entire amount as opposed to what you're recommending is the actuarially recommended amount. Can you talk a little bit about what the difference is, and if there's ever a circumstance, or what circumstance it might be where you would want to put aside the full amount or a lot more, or how that works?
Well, you know, it certainly is a matter of what makes sense. Part of the strategy with funding the pension plan is that you have a long-term approach, putting money in over a gradual period of time. The speed in which different employers will put money in depends, in some respects, on the size of the obligation as well as what the other needs for cash are. You're using a well-thought-out process. You've been using it since 2001. I think we're down, we pay everything off in, you know, the hot, whenever there's an up or down liability, we pay that down over 22 years. Been doing that since 2001. So our original base is about 16 years to go. So in a way, it's a lot of similar considerations to how you would pay off a mortgage or a car loan. You know, what's your use of cash? Can you afford the annual payments? It's just a well-disciplined way to do it. Nothing wrong with doing it faster, but it's sort of, again, a balance of uses of cash versus wanting to clear that debt off the book, so to speak.
Okay, thanks.
And I think one of the things that I always look at in your presentation, your reports, is where on Page 12, you have the participant information. I think that's also very helpful to look at in terms of where, the years of service and the age of who's part of our plan in terms of...
I was just going to ask that, so I guess I can turn that off.
Going to your point about when we're looking forward about who's in the plan and all of that. So I've always found that a very helpful chart as well.
Right. And in the prior page, that shows you a year-to-year comparison on Page 11 as well with some of the averages. And you see, it's pretty stable. You know, there were three officers who transferred out or terminated right before the end of the year, which is a little bit unusual. You know, if that happened every year, we'd have concerns, but this year, it didn't seem to cause a lot of, a lot of stress to the plan.
So covered employees is basically these people on Page 12, all the active?
Correct.
Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Smith, did you have a question?
Yeah. Thank you for the presentation. I'm sorry I was late. You mentioned about the unfunded amount of the plan. Do you guys have any clients that have paid off their unfunded amount, or is that just standard practice?
No, we have some clients who are over 100% funded.
Really?
And it's a lot of different circumstances about how the plan started, how long they've been around, what's happened with it, you know, a lot of, you know, it's not the majority, certainly. Majority are more similar percentage-wise to where you are.
A little higher.
A little higher, okay.
Can you give us an example of some of these jurisdictions?
Of who are overfunded?
Right.
Frederick County? I think Frederick County is there or really close. We do work in West Virginia for 53 different little police and fire funds. There are, of the 53, there are two or three that are over 100% funded. The worst is 6% funded. Their average is 26% funded. So even within a group like that, with all the same benefits but different plans, it's a relatively small percent that are well-funded. We do a lot of counties in Maryland. I think most of them is being around 80 or 90% funded, you know, the Antirundles, the Howards, the St. Mary's might be a little bit smaller. Carroll's pretty well-funded. But I, it's hard to remember exactly names. I just know that Frederick is one of the better ones. But again, yours is just a historical issue. I mean, you came from the state, and while it's been 18 years, you started with basically no money.
Right.
And then you had a lot of disability issues in the beginning, bringing a lot of disability awards. It's always sort of catching up. So we're finally getting to the point where 100% doesn't look so bad, but it's nowhere near where we want it to be. So you are still below average, but the goal is to get to 100% or more. And it also gets a little tough because you've been nice enough to let us lower the discount rate over time, and that just sort of makes it look on paper like it's a bigger unfunded liability. So that slowed down the progress toward 100%, but you're still making good, good progress.
All right, thank you.
Great. Well, thank you very much for coming, and we'll see you next year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next presentation we have tonight is our FY 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. We'll switch PowerPoints.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dan Kenny, partner with Cohen Resnick, here to present the June 30, 19 CAFR for City of Tacoma Park. With me should have been Shannon Engelhardt, but she got into a car accident on 495, and I saw her on 495 and pulled over. So that was not pleasant, but she's okay, thanks to Suzanne, so. Anyway, all right, so let's go into the presentation. This evening, we're going to go through this agenda, the auditor's opinion, the auditor's report on internal control, certain highlights in the CAFR, financial highlights, the 114 communication, and then future implementations. So the auditor's opinion indicates that we've audited the city as of and for the year ended June 30, 2019. Management is responsible for the fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and our responsibility under, under the auditor's responsibility is to express an opinion on the financial statements. And if you look at the third paragraph under there, it indicates that we believe the audit evidence we've obtained is sufficient and appropriate to render an opinion. And if you go to Page 4, "In our opinion, the financial statements for the city as of June 30, 2019 are fairly presented." Okay, and then if you look at other matters, there's two items, RSI and other information. And the GASB requires certain information in the RSI as it relates to the MDNA and the pension information. And then in the other information, it talks about the introductory section, the statistical section, the budgetary comparison schedules, and also the combining schedules. And then if you look on Page 5 of the Independent Auditor's Report, the last paragraph, "Because we perform your audit in accordance with government auditing standards, we issue a report on internal control." And that'll be the next item that I go over. So the report on internal control, this report, there's two sections. There's the internal control over financial reporting, and then you go to the next page, and there's compliance and other matters. So you'll note that in this report, we don't issue an opinion. What we do is, when we plan and perform our audit, we have to understand what's going on in the internal control. It helps us plan and design our tests. But what it does indicate in the third paragraph is that we didn't identify any material weaknesses. So I wanted to point that out. And then if you go to Page 7, under the last sentence, it indicates that there were no instances of non-compliance noted during the audit. Okay, then the CAFR on, this is on Page 8. What we did here was broke down for you the different sections, the MDNA, the government-wide fund financials, the notes in the supplementary, gave you page numbers there. Okay, now, this was Shannon's part, so you'll have to bear with me. Okay, so what we do here, instead of going through all the notes to the financials, we highlight certain key information. So this is your total net position. You can see there was a slight increase from 2018. And if you go to the next slide, this is your total primary government revenue. Once again, slight increase as well there in 2019, up approximately $2 million. And then we break down the four largest items, property taxes, grants and contributions, charges for services, and intergovernmental. And you can see on all, two of the areas, property taxes and grants and contributions, there were slight increases. Charges for services went down slightly, and then intergovernmental, that went up as well slightly. Okay, now, on the primary government, the expense side, the expenses went up slightly as well. And once again, we break down the largest expenses by function, general government, public safety, public works, housing and community development, and rec and culture. And you can see slight increase in general government, slight decrease in public safety, public works went up a little bit as well, housing and community development, that went down a little bit, and then rec and culture went up slightly as well. Okay, and last year, you guys adopted a general fund, fund balance, reserve fund policy, and it requires your fund balance to be 17% of your total general fund. And as you can see, you guys have exceeded that. You're at, 2019, you're at 27%. Okay, the 114 letter I'll go over in a second. And then these are the new future GASBs that are out there, that are, that are coming. Next year, you have the fiduciary activities. Agency funds are going to be called custodial funds, and there's a slight definition change there. And then following, you have leases. And then 89 is your construction period interest and taxes, or that's no longer capitalized, that has to be expensed. And then 90, 91, that's not going to apply to you guys, but that's a few years out. Okay, so that concludes the presentation that we provided. The one thing I do want to go over is the 114 letter, and that should have been given to you or handed out. Yep, yep, that's it. So the professional standards require that we provide you information with our responsibility under generally accepted auditing standards. And so one of the items is qualitative aspects of accounting practices. And we believe all significant transactions have been recognized in the financial statements in the proper period. And then under estimates, there are four estimates within your financial statements, your allowance for doubtful accounts, depreciation expense, of course, the net pension liability, and your accumulated vacation leave. And all of those estimates, we've looked at the key assumptions and determined those to be reasonable and comparable to the previous year. And then if you look on Page 2, it talks about the sensitivity. The actuary spoke a little bit about it in terms of the discount rate, if that goes up or down. Actually, on Page 60 is your, that's your sensitivity, where it talks about the discount rate, if it goes up or down, what, what your net pension liability would do. And then corrected and uncorrected statements. In the back is a, an adjustment that we pass on, it's not material. And so we just have to tell you what that is, and that's behind, that's the last page there. And then there were no disagreements with management. There were no consultations with other accountants regarding any accounting issue, and there were no other findings or issues to disclose. And if you go to the last page, on Page 3, on other matters, this is sort of a repeat in the Independent Auditor's Report on the last page, where it talked about the RSI information and the other information and our responsibility therein. And that concludes the presentation. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions. If I don't know the answer, we'll certainly get back to you. Management is here as well. And I'll open it up. Any questions?
Great. Any questions? Okay. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you for the presentation. I always appreciate you guys come out.
Thank you.
This year, I'm serving as the, on the Executive Committee for Maryland Municipal League's Board of Directors. I held the title as treasurer, so we just went through the audit for the league's financials. I held the title as treasurer, so we just went through the audit for the league's financials. Question I have is how do you test internal control? What's the process?
Okay, that's a great question. So in your internal control letter, if you note, there's the first paragraph, and it talks about in planning and performing the audit, we consider internal controls in order to determine our tests and how we approach our audit. So we don't opine on it, like, we're not going to give you an opinion that says, in our opinion, the internal controls are operating properly. We can't say that, we don't say that. So what we do is we have to understand the environment. We go through all the narratives and the different cycles, payroll, cash disbursements, cash receipts. And we test certain transactions within there. And then if something were to come up, and we would consider, if something were to come up and we thought it was either a material weakness, and that definition is in that internal control letter, it's in the second paragraph, we'd have to tell you, you have a material weakness. Or if there's something in there that we identified that's a significant deficiency, we'd have to tell you that there was a significant deficiency as well. So for you, you don't have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. And another way, you're on that board of MML. Another way you can always tell when your audit has issues or problems is under that corrected and uncorrected item in the 114 letter. If there were significant journal entries that, as a result of our inquiry, you know, we talked to management about, and they just weren't aware of it, we'd have to tell you what entries that, as a result of our audit, you know, we had to make, or we told them you had to make for it to be material. And you didn't have any of those, you just had one past adjustment, it's not material. So now, let me flip on the other side, let me be the conservative accountant. It says also in that letter, we don't identify all material weaknesses, right? Like, you know, if there's something in there, we might not identify. But if we come across something, we're going to let you know. So I don't know if that answers your question.
That's fine.
Okay.
So my understanding, audits aren't like, you know, back in the day, auditors come to an organization, they run through files and, you know, look for how transactions are being processed. Do you guys do that, or is it primarily just accessing our software?
No, we, it's a risk-based approach. So we'll look at, you know, the key areas, the, you know, key areas within the audit. We'll go through the different cycles and we'll test certain transactions within that cycle. We'll look at the balance sheet, we'll test certain items within the balance sheet, either through inquiry, confirmation, or reviewing third-party items. So, and it takes a long time. I mean, this seems very simple, right? But it's not. I mean, it takes, you know, it takes a fair amount of time. And it's, you know, it's very, you know, there's a lot that goes into it. There's a lot of time and effort. Management puts a lot of time into, you know, helping prepare the financial statements and putting that together.
They also spend a lot of time here in the building.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Sure.
Councilmember Culver?
Oh, thank you. Thanks for the presentation, appreciate. Just had a few questions. So first off, and this is on page seven of the document that you just went through, as I handed to us, but I guess it's the second slide on page seven, where it talks about the reserve policy. So, and this might be something that our staff could answer instead. But, so we had adopted this 17%, and I was under the impression that we were a little bit short of that. So I assume this is being calculated differently from that.
It's the end of the year as opposed to the beginning of the year. So if we didn't do a major project or some other things happen, then you have that extra money.
So money that was supposed to be spent, but for whatever reason didn't, gets lumped in, in effect, with the reserves?
That's right.
As of when the fiscal year flipped over?
As of June 30, right.
Okay.
And then we reprogramming it, so we're down low again, because we're still at the beginning part of the year.
But so, looking at it, not from the perspective of the funds that accumulate by the end of the fiscal year, we're not quite as favorable as this shows in terms of our reserve percentage, would you say?
That's right, right now, we're not.
And we still have a little ways to go to get to 17, maybe? I don't think we were quite there the last?
I'd have to look and see our newest projections.
But I think when we adopted the 17, we also sort of agreed that we phased it in over three years, right?
That's right, that's right, so we started low.
Right, okay, all right, so that's, thank you for that. Now, then, on, where you have the bar graphs in here, maybe you can just clarify the distinction in how you calculate total net position versus primary, well, let me see here, total net position versus, yeah, primary government revenue. So, yeah, or page five of the thing we have. So what does, what does total net position consist of that isn't otherwise included? How is that calculated, I guess is the question I'm asking?
So, this is confusing. So within your statements, okay, you have a primary government section, and that is known as full accrual accounting, where you have all your fixed assets and all your debt. Okay, that's the first primary government statement. And then you have your governmental funds, a couple pages back, okay? And then there's a reconciliation that shows you how you go from total net position to total fund balance, okay? That's actually in your financial statements. And the reason it's different is because one is conducted under modified accrual basis, and then the other one is done on accrual basis. So that's why they have the reconciliation.
So is there one that's more, they're both accurate, right? Is there one that?
They're both fairly presented.
Right, is there, but is there, is there one that is better for us to think of as?
Well, most governments, that's a good question. I know, I know what you're getting at. So in terms of your fund balance policy, that's based on your governmental funds. That's your general fund, okay? So that's how you've calculated your fund balance policy. And that's what folks do, because that's your current resources, that's what you're trying to get at. GASB came out way back when with this GASB 34, and that's where it wanted you, wanted everybody on their financial statements to include the fixed assets and the liabilities. You might remember back in the day where they had a balance sheet and they had a line, it was called the General Fixed Asset Account Group, and then the General Long-Term Debt Account Group. And it was these two columns on the right. And people were like, I don't know, they didn't like it. So that's when GASB came up with this GASB 34, to come up with this primary government concept and full accrual accounting for everything. And that's where you had to book your infrastructure and, you know, roads and bridges and things like that.
Those include things that we arguably have less control over year to year, is that a accurate way to put it?
Well, it's just, it's everything. You know, your net position is, you know, your total assets minus your total liabilities, you know, adding deferred outflows and inflows. That's your net position, that's everything. And your general fund fund balance, that number is just the general fund, right? All the other funds are specifically used for certain purposes. But the general fund is your catch-all. And then within your general fund, you know, you have your committed, assigned, you know, you have certain categories. But your unassigned number, that's what's, you know, typically what's left over. And that's where you come up with your policy.
Okay, I just have two other questions.
Sure.
So in the actual big document, of the CAFR document, on page 20, down at the bottom, the last paragraph, it says, there's an unrestricted portion of the net position was a deficit of this amount, and that resulted from the reporting of the net pension liability of $15 million. So is that connected to the previous presentation?
Yeah.
And so if you took out the pension, the net pension liability, then does that, would that eliminate the deficit?
If you took out your net pension liability, yeah, that would certainly, you know, change that number, absolutely. But you can't because it's your net pension liability.
We're required to report that, but just in terms of for this year, if we don't spend that money, am I thinking of it the right way? That, that, that's not like an annual deficit, we just, we didn't raise enough taxes that year to pay for the?
That's, yeah, two different things.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, you are right. I mean, it's an estimate, right? That's one of your significant estimates, and it's something, you know, you don't have to pay right now. It's the estimate of the future cost, and that's what we're going to have to?
Thanks, and then just one last question. Toward the back, I think it's maybe on page 101, maybe? But I may not have the right page, but there's, there's a complicated set of discussions about how much money we've borrowed through various bonding and so on. And there's a few different pages on that. It looked like the material, and I've got the wrong page here, but it looked like the material said that all of those amounts were well within the different percentages that we have for how we calculate our acceptable indebtedness. Is that?
Yeah, that's exactly right.
We are within, we're well within that, is that what?
Yeah, and that's what this is, the computation of legal debt margin, correct.
Which, I'm sorry, which page is that?
It's page 101.
It was 101, okay.
Yep, you were right.
101.
Glad you read the statement.
But if you also then look at page 103, there's, that may be what you're also looking, thinking of? Is the?
Right, the ratio.
The ratio.
Well, there's different ways to calculate it, but we're within the range on all the different ways of calculating it, right?
When we went out to, for bonding, we were very careful to describe how far under we were.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
Great, Councilwoman Kostic? Thank you very much for the presentation and for all of your work on this. One of the things I found really interesting and useful was to look through in some of the specific places where different expenses or expenditures increased or decreased from last year. And so this is more of a question for the city manager than for you. But one of the things that caught my eye was that charges for services decreased, 288,000 this year. And one of the areas it looks like this happened in was a decrease in speed camera fines of about 235,000. That seemed like a lot to me. I was wondering, was there a specific instance where a camera wasn't operational? Or for some reason, people weren't speeding, or what happened?
Over time, fewer people have been speeding in the areas that we check. And so that was part of why we were looking at it really closely. And we renegotiated the rates now with the company. We also, you know, on New Hampshire Avenue, only could do one lane as opposed to all three lanes each way, and so that will be changing.
Do you know, you might not know offhand, is this a fairly comparable decrease in speed camera revenue over the years? Is there a similar amount each year, or that we reduce?
This seems, this seems larger, and so we're still investigating it.
Okay, yeah, I'd be interested in finding out if there was more, more information on that. And then I also just wanted to call out the information on page 109, operating indicators by function, which I found to be really interesting and useful. The different functions, you know, calls for service under public safety, going from 2019 back to 2010, number of new nuisance complaints. There were some really interesting differences. And I'm sure some are just flukes, and some might be attributable to specific changes in departments. But I think I'd be really interested in kind of drilling down into some of those numbers in the future and understanding, as we think about budgeting for the future, what the trends are and what's happening there. So, thank you.
Sure.
Keep a look at how many signs have been removed. Great, well, thank you very much. And I just, I really want to also thank our Director of Finance, Susan Chung, for an excellent CAFR again this year and all her hard work on this, so thank you very much.
And some year, we're going to have something where an auditor can say, you did great! As opposed to, it was fairly presented.
Well, having, as my colleague, Councilmember?
Soon as I say you do great, then it might go the other way.
I know.
Keep the bar high.
I think as my colleague, Councilmember Smith, said, you know, many of us have served on boards and been in the role where the news has not always been as wonderful as this. So we thank you very much and thank the staff for all their good work, so, thank you. All right, we are up to our third presentation of the evening, which is our Sustainability and Climate Action Plan. And I believe I'm going to welcome up our Sustainability Manager, Gina Mathias.
Hi. I have with me Kai from the Cadmus Group, who will go through a presentation of their work momentarily. But first, I wanted to set the stage of what to expect with his presentation. So to remind everybody, in the beginning part of this year, we realized we needed a new sustainability plan since our 2014 Sustainable Energy Action Plan has been implemented. That plan consisted of 17 key strategies to reduce energy use citywide. And we implemented most of those items. They included things such as expanding bike share access, energy efficiency programs for homeowners and multifamily buildings, reducing the city's energy use, and many more actions. Our new plan is still under works. So our work with, we contracted with the Cadmus Group. They were selected because of their contract with MW COG and our ability to ride that contract. The task order we sent to the Cadmus Group comprised of three main tasks. The first, we asked Cadmus to provide an analysis of emissions trends citywide and to produce a prioritized list of greenhouse gas emission reduction strategies for the city to consider, new strategies that we had not undertaken before. We asked them to prepare a climate and resiliency adaptation memo to help us start laying the context of what we're doing. And also a next steps memo. So these three products Kai can talk about in detail. These we will use along with the efforts that are going on at the county level to create our comprehensive Sustainability and Climate Action Plan on how to get to your goal of 100% reductions by 2035. So with that, I'd like Kai to talk about what they found during their work.
Thank you very much, Gina. Yes, I'm Kai Barong, and great to be here tonight. Gina mentioned I'm from the Cadmus Group, and also I'm a local, actually over in Silver Spring, but relatively local, spent a lot of time here. So really, very pleased to be able to work with you all on supporting this next stage for your climate planning. So today, I'm actually, this evening, I'm actually going to go through quickly, as Gina noted, just a little bit about the process that we took. We'll provide a quick update on that inventory and the greenhouse gas emission trends that we're seeing. Talk about the stakeholder engagement that was involved. Then get into those prioritized strategies for emissions reductions, the analysis that we conducted on that front. And then kind of talk about some of the next steps. Shouldn't take too long, I'll try to get us through that rather quickly. So the timeline here, right? So we did, we kicked this off with the kickoff in May, and then basically started with developing that greenhouse gas inventory update. Again, as Gina noted, the original inventory, or the most recent one, had been done as part of that sustainability, or the Sustainable Energy Action Plan in 2014 with a kind of interim update on the inventory itself in 2015. So this was updating up to 2015 figures. And then it was following that in a presentation of the results from that, from that greenhouse gas emissions inventory through a webinar, that we further refined our kind of recommendations for potential emission reduction strategies that we then pulled together, presented during a large stakeholder workshop here, actually back in September, and included multiple other stakeholder engagement processes that we'll talk about a little bit. And then kind of underlying all of this, we also, kind of running in parallel, we're doing interviews and looking at the adaptation and resilience kind of landscape on which these greenhouse gas emissions reduction strategies would be, should be considered and implemented. So quickly, the, wanted to note also that critically, running throughout this process, starting with the kickoff and running throughout all of those different steps that I just mentioned, was the critical value and role of considering equity throughout, equity and strong resilience considerations. And we kicked it, kicked off with the kind of a mini training on equity considerations and have continued that as a theme throughout all of this. and have continued that as a theme throughout all of our engagements with the city. So, quickly on this, the kind of update on where things stand for the greenhouse gas emissions, this first slide will show you where things are now, the next slide's going to show you the trends. But kind of the key takeaway here, I think, is that you've got about, around 50%, kind of your emissions are generally split between the stationary energy emissions, which are those that are kind of residential and commercial energy. You'll see that the residential and commercial energy themselves are almost equally split. And then aside from that, the other greenhouse gas emissions are largely coming from transportation. So, kind of on-road transportation, kind of what's originating, what's taking place in the city bounds, and also what's originating from, kind of trips originating from the city are taken into account. There is, of course, a contribution from solid waste management and wastewater, but that is actually relatively quite small. It's about, it's a little less than 1%, it's around 1% of the total greenhouse gas emissions currently. These numbers I have here, just to kind of put a little context that the, let's see, the emissions per capita of 7.3 metric tons per person is definitely a fair amount smaller than the per capita emissions for Montgomery County as a whole, which I think 2015 was around 9.9 metric tons. So, Tacoma Park does have lower per capita emissions by a kind of not insignificant amount. And then, looking forward to the emissions trends, what we see here is looking across kind of 2012, 2015, 2017, the most recent update, I'll just, I'll note that there's a little bit of shading on the end of the 2017 figures, and that's actually because of a difference in methodology used for the transportation emissions calculations. And so, basically, there was a slight difference in the methodology that we're using now versus what had been used specifically for the, for the calculations in the 2012 and 2015 inventories. And so, our figures were showing a little bit lower, so we didn't want to overstate the kind of decreases that we're seeing in emissions since 2015 in particular. So, we kind of adjusted that, it's about a 10% on the transportation values themselves. But the, kind of a few takeaways here are that we are seeing the residential energy, the residential energy component of the emissions is going, is going down, has continued to go down. The commercial energy component is increasing largely, that's due to gas, kind of natural gas use increasing. And kind of we're going to look into the reasons on that a bit, more likely, kind of both a combination of increased business and within the existing businesses increased shift to natural gas use. So, that's both occurring. And then, there's the overall emissions from vehicle, from transportation has gone down, and that's even though there's been an increase in kind of total vehicle miles traveled. So, we're kind of traveling more miles, which is not necessarily a great thing. However, because of increases in efficiency for the vehicles and kind of technologies, you've got, you know, more electric vehicles coming into use, you're seeing an overall reduction in the transportation contribution. So, that's good. And then, the other kind of issue to note is that since 2012, there has been a slight increase, as you can probably see here, has been a slight increase in the total emissions of about 1.7%, but there's a, but there's a decrease in per capita. So, at the same time, we're having that slight increase in emissions, you're also having some population growth, and so the per capita emissions from 2012 to 2017 has gone down about 2.5%. So, the trend line is good there and with respect to per capita emissions.
Just a question, what are fugitive emissions?
Yeah. The ones that have escaped. The question's about fugitive emissions. So, it's actually, it's the kind of gas or other elements that are kind of released, in this case, it's from transmission lines for gas. So, basically, it's not counted as the gas usage, but it's the fact that you consider about 1% of gas in those transmission lines is lost, lost to the environment, so. Good question. All right. So, then, kind of quickly then, the process here again. So, basically, what I also want to highlight, I think from that previous section was, you know, what we're seeing is the emissions are largely coming from transportation and then stationary energy, the residential and commercial. So, that, obviously, that's what shaped our motivation for what strategies to develop. And so, the process that we took was, we developed an initial list of strategies that were appropriate for kind of Tacoma Park based on the, based on geography, based on kind of city scale, and based on that inventory outcome, right? So, we want to look at the type of strategies that are going to be most effective to address these, the emissions profile we're seeing. And so, we developed an initial list, and this is largely looking at what other municipalities are doing across the country, then kind of engage, get stakeholder community input and feedback, work with the city on kind of priorities as well, identify a more narrow subset of prioritized strategies, and then do some analysis and assessment on those prioritized strategies we're going to come up with. Start with 18 and funnel that down to eight. So, that's what we did. And when we're looking at these, I kind of categorized these, as a result of that inventory, we decided to categorize these as kind of those that are focused on maximizing energy efficiency, then also kind of shifting things as much as possible away from natural gas and to electricity. And there's a reason for that, because then, once you have energy that's being drawn from electricity, that can be sourced from renewable sources, right? So, maybe natural gas might be lower in the emissions that are created than would be coming from coal, for example, but to the extent that you can shift natural gas sources to electricity and then use renewables to provide a source for that electricity, then you're going to overall, you're going to reduce your emissions. So, maximize efficiency, electrify, and then kind of increase the overall portfolio that's comprised of renewables. And then kind of others that we got in here, some on the transit front and some others that will, that are kind of, that are in the report. So, again, we kind of started with 15 through consultation and through engagement with the city. We came, added a couple, a few extras, started with 18. As Gina mentioned, the idea is that we don't want to be duplicative of existing efforts or kind of those under current consideration, but these should be kind of additive to what had been planned and what kind of is under consideration now, and kind of taking into consideration the coordination that will be necessary across city, regional, and at a state level. So, the stakeholder, just kind of pointing out, after we identified this initial set of all of these strategies, we then wanted to get community feedback on that, and so we held the workshop here with over 50 participants, a series. Gina, Gina and her team did an excellent job of going out and doing focus groups with the different wards, kind of ended other locations, doing the kind of tabling sessions at different events, the folk festivals and others, and then also pulling together an online survey. And so, Gina and the city kind of led off on the focus groups, tabling and survey with some Cadmus support on the, kind of, on some of that content and ensuring that all of the stakeholder engagement would be kind of aligned and in kind of the way it can be used to inform the strategy prioritization. And so, from all of that, the, where we came to on these strategies, were these kind of eight prioritized strategies selected for further evaluation and kind of, and some of the analysis. And so, I'll just kind of very quickly note what each of those are. So, renewable thermal, community outreach campaigns. Really, what we're talking about there is kind of campaigns to increase the use of, we say, renewable thermal or heat pumps, basically technologies that are, that are again going to either be more efficient than current kind of forced air, air conditioning or heating HVAC units, and also importantly, types of things that, again, are shifting away from the natural gas to electrical devices. The transit accessibility and outreach, that's largely focused on bikeability and kind of improving bike access to the metro as well. So, there's kind of aligned with the Montgomery County Bike Plan, and then a general campaign to also overall increase public transportation usage here. The residential energy assessments, so looking there kind of either periodically or at a point of sale, requiring that there be energy assessments to understand what, kind of, what is expected to be the emissions or energy use that can be then translated to emissions for residents, and then also aligning that with some required upgrades. So, if kind of it's not hitting a certain threshold of energy efficiency, that upgrades be introduced to improve the efficiency. Commercial and multifamily energy disclosure ordinance. The idea here is that we're, you know, looking at, in this case, it's actually just saying that it's an ordinance that requires that commercial and multifamily actually, again, disclose their, their energy usage. And research has actually shown that even just through public disclosure of, of energy consumption and use, that numbers are, numbers often go down, because if a, if a business is having to report on that in a public way, and they may be competing with others or for other reasons decrease their consumption, then pairing that with the next one, which is on this second row, is then also with commercial and multifamily buildings, implementing performance requirements. So, you have disclosure and then you have performance requirements. And so, the kinds of things there are, again, you know, kind of saying if, if a commercial structure is not meeting a certain threshold, that then one could implement penalties and also maybe provide subsidies for retrofitting so that the, these efficiencies could be achieved. A community choice aggregation, so basically, this is a legal arrangement that allows for the city to procure on behalf, procure energy on behalf of the residents and, and commercial sector as well. So, basically, the, the idea here is that through doing that, that's, it can wind up having significant impacts, but through having the, this aggregation, you'll have much more significant purchasing power, and then so you can get kind of a cheaper portfolio, cheaper sources of energy, and you can get an entire portfolio that is, comprises renewable energy sources, lower emissions, and that can have actually a significant impact on the city's total emissions levels. And then, a natural gas elimination, or, you know, the phrasing could be, could be banned here, but it's elimination specifically in this case for new construction. So, the idea here is that if this is a natural gas elimination for new construction, this could be paired with the renewable thermal kind of community outreach programs where you're essentially, again, trying to decrease overall reliance on, on natural gas as an energy source. And again, this could be kind of paired with, you could eliminate, but you could pair that with some subsidies or support programs. And then, finally, a virtual PPA, so this, this is a power purchase agreement, and just kind of quickly, the idea there is that the, kind of an innovative energy purchasing agreement that some municipalities are using, that essentially allows, at this point, kind of municipalities or commercial entities to, to purchase, kind of go under contract for energy from a renewable energy project that, that the energy is provided, sold to the wholesale market at a certain rate. The municipality is receiving that price for their energy. They will continue to receive their, their electricity from their supplier, but they will receive a renewable energy certificate that basically is kind of, in a sense, offsets the, the energy that they're, that they're receiving from their supplier. So, there are protections around this where you kind of ensure that there's, this is all additional to what power would already be developed. The idea here is that you are basically supporting increased renewable electricity availability and that you would be ensuring that your electricity at a, being used is coming from a renewable source. One note here that we, that we did want to point out, that this, you know, these do require some kind of legislative agreements, et cetera, as does the community choice aggregation. On virtual PPAs, this is one of the areas where Tacoma Park could be more pioneering, in a sense, because we're not aware of any examples in which this has been done with municipalities and the private sector. So, if kind of maybe a public-private partnership to do this virtual PPA so that you are basically using this to get the energy source for both municipal and commercial facilities, could be, could be rather innovative nationally. So, that's one note. Okay, so, with those, with those eight strategies, we went through and we looked at, we did an assessment that I'll, I'll talk about on the next couple slides quickly, on basically kind of calculating what some estimates are for their greenhouse gas emissions reductions. We won't talk in this presentation, but we also did in the report, go into some of the estimates, kind of at a high-level rough scale, but looking at comparable municipalities and examples and scaling that, but kind of appropriate costs that may be borne by some of these strategies, largely looking at that from the city's perspective, and then also kind of looking at some, you know, challenges, opportunities, basically kind of barriers, solutions as a way to frame that. So, again, those are more in the report, but we did just want to kind of highlight the outcomes here. What we did is we looked at both high and low greenhouse gas reduction scenarios. The differences are specific to the strategies, and so I can kind of give some examples on those, but this isn't like kind of, you know, one overarching assumption that dictates the difference between a high or low scenario. But basically, you know, basically kind of saying, if you're talking about a high scenario, this is saying that, you know, if you switch to, switch away from gas to maybe the, the heat pumps, if you're switching that to the electric heat pumps, then one could assume that the energy supplied for that, the electricity supplied for the, the heat pumps, either comes from completely renewable power, which would then put you in a high emissions scenario, or maybe it comes from your current kind of portfolio, which isn't, isn't entirely renewable. So, those are the assumptions that are made at kind of each of the strategies. We outline those in our report, I can talk about more if, if that's of interest. But the takeaway here, what's important is that, an important kind of point also to make in reviewing this, is that a critical assumption is that the Maryland Renewable Portfolio Standard that is currently in place and has a requirement that the total electricity supplied for the state of Maryland be, target 50% renewable by 2030. So, that is happening kind of in the background as Tacoma Park, as Montgomery County, as, as other jurisdictions in Maryland are making these plans. So, we assume that that is happening in the background, so that's already going to do, have some significant reductions in emissions, right? So, if at a state level, they're requiring that these electricity providers are, you know, increasing up to 50% renewable, that's going to have an impact on your, on your reductions itself. So, what we'll, what we see is that the, the contribution from these strategies is basically what's kind of under this, not the dotted red line at the top, but the, kind of the top line of this figure and the top of the gray bar. So, the gray is emissions that are remaining. So, basically, what you're seeing is by the end of this period, by the end of this period, moving out to 2035, so the next about 15 years, the expectation is you would then reduce emissions with these strategies and the Maryland Renewable Portfolio Standard to. emissions with these strategies and the Maryland Renewable Portfolio Standard to about 50% of of where they are, of where they were in 2017. I think what's important here is that the the significant focus of these strategies was on that stationary energy component, right? So most of it was on stationary energy and things that can be done. And effectively, what you're doing is you're you're reducing and removing a really significant amount of the stationary energy emissions. So that's that's the good news. What's really left over, if we kind of look, think back to that inventory, the other half of the emissions were coming from transportation. So we've got a little bit of transportation emission reductions, but the the bulk are still there. And the reason why largely is because we see these, you know, one, one reason I think about this is that a lot of the transportation reductions will need a lot more kind of regional coordination, right? So kind of ensuring that that buses are, you know, that the bus fleet is is increases its efficiency, or, you know, is usual, is using other sources of gas or is electric, doing kind of increases for the the increases in metro accessibility and and usage additionally would be something that kind of would benefit from regional cooperation. So I think the takeaways here are that you've you can do some pretty significant work by by implementing these strategies, but it's not going to get, we're not going to get down to the zero by 2035. And the real area for kind of focus there would be on transportation. Just kind of flipping between the high and low, I'll do the low next. The idea here again is that overall, when you when you include the Maryland Renewable Portfolio Standard, the reduction is between 42 and 48% from our 2017 levels. And the reduction basically that is contributed specifically by these eight strategies is between, I'm sorry, is between 12 and 20%. So basically, where emissions would have been in 2035, the difference added by these these strategies is between 12 and 20%. Okay? So I kind of, I think I covered most of these and our kind of key findings, but what we did find is that-
Can I just ask, can you clarify on that? So that's less because otherwise it would have been going up more and more, is that what that?
Um, not going, it was, it's not going to be, well-
Well, so I guess what I'm asking is, why would the, if you're reducing it by 42%, why would that only mitigate it by 12%?
I think, yeah, no, I hear. I think this is phrased not as clearly as it should be, because that reduced 42% by 20 of 2017 emissions. So basically, and importantly, this is missing that clear point, that you get that 42% by implementing these strategies and considering the Maryland Renewable Portfolio Standard, which is also drawing you down. So that's what gets the 42% from 2017 levels. The 12% is really supposed to just be referencing what you get exclusively from the the eight strategies. And that's that's the same on both of these. So basically, the strategy, the eight strategies themselves are going to get kind of an add-on 12 to 20% of emissions. Because you're, because you are assuming that the underlying kind of background is changing such that your portfolio, your entire portfolio standard across Maryland is is becoming more renewable.
And because, and this is a question-
Yeah.
And because a lot of what's left in the gray is transportation.
That would be there kind of regardless, though.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That that gray is going to say that the tran, that's largely the transportation.
So if your goal was to only reduce building emissions, it might be a higher percent. But because there's also all this transportation that the city does not directly influence, and you didn't can, you didn't calculate, then the percentage that we can actually achieve is lower?
Yes, if you were to take off transportation, say, I mean, if we were to say, if if this figure were to say, we're only on resident, the stationary energy component of your total greenhouse gas emissions, then then it would look very different.
That number would be a lot higher, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be like, you know, eighty or ninety percent. But yeah, I think the, and I think what is interesting, what is actually kind of a note here, because a question might arise, well, if Maryland, if a policy changes and the Maryland Renewable Portfolio Standard doesn't continue, well, where will that leave us? And and what is important is that, in particular, the CCA, the aggregation will actually allow for, that green bar would get bigger if the underlying kind of portfolio of energy actually wasn't decreasing as much. So basically, if Maryland doesn't say you have to keep increasing your total portfolio to 50% renewable, then this is, then that kind of, that strategy would allow you to to pull off more of that energy and pull it into renewables. So so there's there's good things about implementing those, that's not going to be captured here, but it's an important-
Yeah, one question I have is, so for the various strategies, is there, were there any assumptions about the city's current state of play regarding those? So let's say if we were to go back to to the figure-
That's one of our figure.
Where, yes, yes, that one.
Yeah.
Um, so let's say, for example, the building performance requirements. Was that calculation based on the current number of, let's say, multifamily buildings that are currently in the city? And if we were to increase, the marginal effect of that policy would be higher, right? So I'm just trying to make sure I understand-
Yep.
The underlying assumptions for some of these, that we perhaps would have a little bit more control over influencing. So like the building performance requirements, I would assume that that would somehow be, you know, contingent on the number of multifamily buildings we have, if we were to increase those, you know, what impact that would have. Or the energy, residential energy assessments strategy, again, would be one that would be contingent on the number of, you know, typically, single-family homeowners rentals as well, but the number of folks that we have here that are in properties that would be assessed, and what they're actually doing in response to those assessments, right? So were there any assumptions kind of, as it relates to those strategies, and assessing the impact, or the marginal impact of each of those on like, where we should focus in terms of our strategy going forward, or where we may be able to prioritize?
Yeah, no, that's an excellent question. And I mean, it's kind of strategy by strategy, that yes, those assumptions are made, we kind of tried to lay those all out in the report as well, and can provide additional calculations, assumptions as well. But yeah, that's a great question. And I think the way the answer is probably twofold is, one, there is a, there is an underlying assumption on this also, that kind of some of this decrease is that we do also expect that the existing trends that have happened will continue happening into the future. So this is, we're assuming that these trends continue, but then on top of that, we're saying, let's imagine that we've got a 1% decrease, as we've been seeing, kind of a 1% annual, but in addition to that, you're having the Maryland RP Renewable Portfolio Standard, and in addition to that, you're having these eight strategies. And each of these strategies is going to operate in a different way. And then kind of also, to your point, within each of those strategies, you may say, we're, we make an assumption that there's kind of a certain level of uptake here. And so, and that's kind of where you differentiate between the high and the low. So for example, one of the, where basically it's the, not just, not the disclosures, but basically the kind of the follow-through on those, or no, like the CCA, like whether you're, it's assuming maybe a high scenario is that you've got 95% of the of residences are are taking that, are agreeing to stay in, if you kind of have an opt-out clause, like you say, you will do it unless you opt out. And then in a low emission scenario, you say it's an 85%, 85% kind of uptake. So so that's a, that's a great point, because then you can see if if there's something with between that high and low, then you might be able to target interventions to say, what do we need to do to ensure that we aren't at 85%, we're at 95%? And so that's, hopefully that addresses your question. Great. All right. And so again, it's kind of quickly, the the community choice aggregation was kind of the the greatest, I'm not going to say bang for the buck, but provided the greatest opportunity for emissions reductions of all the ones that we looked at. And again, it can be pretty sizable and significant, and can grow if the Maryland RPS does not play out, although there's not an expectation that that would change. Others, the other ones that kind of had a pretty significant impact on emissions were the residential energy assessments, the performance requirement, again, that's for commercial, and then the energy disclosure ordinance. And again, those kind of can be paired and can leverage to increase the overall impact. And then important, I think this is that important point, is that kind of as the electric grid becomes less carbon intensive due to implementation of Maryland Renewable Portfolio, the amount of emissions reduction directly attributed to these, to these strategies decreases, I think that might make sense. And then, and then kind of the point I already made about deeper emissions reductions would require transportation focus. So I did want to just very quickly touch on, as Gina alluded to, you know, this is all in the context, in addition to what we were looking at for the strategies, we did absolutely provide kind of both desk research and also interviews, kind of with folks from housing and emergency management, equity experts as well, and Montgomery MW COG, we reached out to them and had interviews on kind of understanding these different perspectives on adaptation resilience, looking at the key climate threats and stressors. The ones that were identified that we focused more on than others were the extreme heat, heat waves, et cetera, flooding and increased storm severity. Drought was noted, but not as one of the primary considerations we, but we we did explore that a bit and talk about some of the strategies. So I'm kind of running on time, but basically, we also, kind of in the report, you'll see some some strategies that have been developed by kind of each of these, can talk about some of what those might be. And then in addition to those strategies to address the risks themselves, we did look at the kind of these climate preparedness and resilience co-benefits of the, not just the eight strategies, but the initial 18 strategies that we had started to consider for greenhouse gas emission reduction. So basically, we're trying to see which of those emissions reduction strategies also had kind of additional co-benefits for improving climate preparedness and and resilience. And it's kind of, we've explored those as well. So then the, kind of moving into kind of just suggestions on next steps, and part of what's included a bit in that, the funding and next steps memo that was provided to the city is basically saying, okay, now moving from these strategies into an implementation plan, some of the considerations there are around, you know, basically what are kind of more comprehensive pathways of looking out, maybe kind of inclusive of a broader suite of kind of future scenarios perhaps, timeline for implementation, basically the part, the potential partners you're going to want to engage with, opportunities for accelerating, well, I think critically, opportunities for the city to engage residents. I think there's a really critical component here that's not reflected in here as much, but is in the report, about the critical importance of ensuring that moving into the next steps and implementation of the strategies is is inclusive and focused on equity and absolutely engages the community, I think, even to a much greater degree than we did, I think, as part of this strategy development, in ensuring that there's, that the implementation is is as inclusive and meets the equity considerations for Tacoma Park as, in order to most ensure kind of long-term success as well. And then kind of looking at more of the costs and budgets to consider. So I think with that, my time might be on, but I'm happy to address other questions.
I got a quick question for you.
Yes, please.
Thank you for the presentation. I recently had a briefing from Christine Knapp, she's the Director of Sustainability for the City of Philadelphia. And they're doing the commercial energy disclosure. Can you talk more about that? And how do you see us implementing a program like that?
Yeah, I think, I mean, how do we say, I think that, how do we implement it, is going to be more on the implementation phase, and kind of has a lot more, I think, considerations around timeline prioritization of kind of which steps to take first. But at the highest, at the highest level, we'd be able to look at other, I think, what we recommend starting with, is is looking at some of these other examples of municipalities and jurisdictions that have implemented this, finding ones that are kind of most appropriately aligned with Tacoma Park's kind of size and and kind of direction, and I think also makeup of the commercial sector. And then, you know, really what you're looking at, and this can take multiple forms, right? Some of this is, some of these are ones where you're talking much more about kind of online port, online-
Reporting?
Yeah, there's reporting, like the, you know, interfaces, basically, where you can do this using Portfolio Manager, so there's some existing suites of software that that are available, where commercial entities can can go on and more easily do, make their disclosures, and there's kind of suites, you know, suites that can kind of collect, collate, publicize this data, do some analysis. So there's kind of a wide range, or it could be more, kind of more straightforward, and I think you could kind of scale it to your interests and budget. So maybe ones that would be, would would much more focus on just kind of capturing the bare minimum of what what the, what the energy usage, and then kind of reporting that out. Again, this could then be aligned with other kinds of, you know, things where you're, it's part of a broader outreach strategy, and that encourages others to look at the disclosures, right? So I mean, this could be used mostly for the, that follow-up performance requirements, or it could be something that's more like, okay, you know, let's compete on this, and you could be presenting your, your your energy use or emissions in a positive light to gain business, or these kinds of things. Recognizing for some, that's going to, it's going to be much more, won't be necessarily seen as a positive. And I think that's, that would be something that's taken into consideration and is noted in our kind of challenges as well. And and different municipalities have kind of handled that differently, right? So so there could be pushback from some of them, kind of constituents, and I think that's definitely understandable, and there are different ways of addressing that.
So in your policy memo, you feature the City of Los Angeles, and Los Angeles has created this big open data project. And so I would assume that what they're doing in sustainability is feeding up into their open data project. So do you think that Tacoma Park should do something similar, so that, you know, all these different initiatives, the 18, whether it's 18 or eight, we can put it into some type of big data, so that people, residents, professionals can analyze it, see what we're doing, make assumptions, hypotheses?
Do I think that, I I think that there's there's significant benefit to that, because it provides a lot more transparency and kind of allows for the, for residents, constituents to have a better understanding of what strategies are being planned, what is expected, what the performance of, what the performance is of those strategies, kind of moving forward in time. And then I think I would just also note that, again, there's different scales of this, and I think that it, there are dashboards and kind of software suites that are available that are not, that have been developed kind of tailor-made for this kind of reporting. And so it wouldn't necessarily need to have a significant huge investment, kind of in necessarily kind of big data that's doing a lot of analysis, and a lot of kind of, you know, like AI or something like that. It's, that's not, I wouldn't, I don't think that's necessary, and I think for Tacoma Park, it wouldn't be probably the direction to go. But I think that there's, I think there would be a lot of benefit in having something like an online dashboard that residents and others could go to, to track progress.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Kostick?
Thank you. I didn't think I was next. So I I really appreciate the the information in the report. It's really useful to look through and kind of consider these different things. I think, to me, the the biggest thing that we should look at, that I don't feel like is included here, is really the transportation bit. You know, looking at the charts and seeing that there's still such a chunk that there's no way we're going to get to if we don't address the transportation part, really hits home in terms of how important that section is. So as we're developing our plan based on this, and and looking into this- So as we're developing our plan based on this and, and looking into this, I, I think it'll be really important to consider what we can do in terms of transportation. And you're absolutely right that there are a lot of limitations to us as a locality, municipality that doesn't control our own buses, you know, we don't control Womata. There are a lot of limitations, but I also think that we need to think a little more boldly and we need to consider this more holistically as well in terms of the benefits that we might have if we can transition away from having so many cars in the city, for example. And there might be opportunities for us to do things like restrict parking or, you know, raise parking rates or work together, as you noted, with other regional partners or other levels of government or even private companies that want to test out new technologies, for example. But my impression from serving on the Transportation Planning Board at the regional level and just communicating with the county on a lot of these things is that I don't think they are going to be moving as fast as we want them to be moving if we're looking to get to zero. And we're going to need to do a lot of pushing of them on the transportation part if we want that to progress. So I'd love for us to think about ways we could pilot programs, you know, through ride-on. There's a, a current project that they're doing in some parts of the county called Ride-On Flex where they have these vans, on-demand sort of vans, van buses that you can request. And they will take you anywhere within a small region. So maybe that is something we could look at and we could look towards, I don't believe those vehicles are EV right now, but that's something that moving down the line could be an opportunity and could create those connections within the city and also to the larger systems like Womata and the bus system. I also think, like I said, looking at some of the co-benefits, not just in terms of resilience, but in terms of quality of life and improvement of just, you know, neighborhood air quality, safety, all of those things, not just for transportation, some of the other things as well. But I think we should look for connections across departments, whether it's, you know, looking with housing or economic development or some of the other added benefits we could have through making some of these changes. And I know that's something that staff look at all the time, but I think we should integrate that as much as possible into the plan. I did have a couple of questions regarding the report specifically. And one of them in terms of transportation is even if we do make those changes, are we going to be able to see it through measurement based on how you're measuring the transportation? Because it's sort of based right now on, on the Montgomery County numbers, right?
Yeah.
It's not specific to what our residents are doing.
It's not specific to what the residents are doing because it is scaled, because we didn't, we don't have the Tacoma Park specific data for this kind of vehicle miles traveled. And so what was used is the Montgomery County scale and it's scaled to Tacoma Park. And so I think one of, one of the recommendations would be to actually kind of start with doing an assessment or inventory of what, what the, what the local scale reality is with respect to both kind of actual, actual vehicle miles traveled as well as what the, the distribution of, is of those vehicles, right? So which ones are diesel, which ones are using electric, which are hybrid and primarily gasoline? Because again, we use the Montgomery County kind of distribution as, as an, as an approximator there. So that would be kind of an initial step. So whether you're going to see that, kind of if Tacoma Park went to zero, but you didn't have that data, then, then that's, I mean, that's a very good point. Kind of a lot of times in these, in the inventories, you're using the, the data that's available that you can kind of draw from maybe a higher region to then scale. So that's, that's a great point.
So how would you, how would you do that? Would it be a survey of residents?
Yeah, there's actually, there is some good, I'm not the best person to ask. I'm kind of like, folks, an art group, but then also MW COG actually probably would be, would be well placed to say, here's how, here's how we do this. And you can use the exact same methodology, but at your, at the Tacoma Park scale.
Yeah, the TPB definitely does a number of regional travel surveys. So I'm sure we could scale it to Tacoma Park specifically.
You could actually even maybe ask MW COG to, to do one of those surveys, like for Tacoma Park. Yeah, Gina might.
They're not willing, they will not be doing a survey for Tacoma Park. But I do have a very lengthy email with a very detailed explanation that I can forward to council from MW COG on this. It is way above my pay grade to understand the minutia. But I would like all of you to, you know, have the opportunity to look at that explanation on why we're just using the scaled data.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, this goes to a whole nother conversation. But I think in terms of my experiences serving on the Transportation Planning Board over the past two years, a lot of it is really focused on roads and there isn't always a lot of opportunity for those extra collaborations on thinking about transit. And we've tried to move in that direction more and more, and there are some aspirational initiatives in the new long-range plan. But, you know, I think there just needs to be more of a push. And maybe there's, Cindy and I have talked a little bit about maybe some collaboration with some of the other climate-focused COG groups, but I think that'll be really important to do. My other thought, my other thought regarding transportation was in, in the report, I think there were just a couple of cases where it seemed like the focus in terms of transit was primarily focused on Old Town and the metro, rather than thinking also about the connectivity to the Purple Line. So as we're considering that, we should be thinking about those, both of those two different nodes. And then the other point I've heard from residents, and I think you noted in the survey, is that there is an interest among residents in sort of a more individual level, things that people can do themselves. And I completely understand that because as somebody who is not an environmental, you know, expert, looking at a lot of these things, they're, I know they're very important, but they're not something that I personally can do. And so sometimes, you know, I, I think sometimes it feels like, you know, I can choose to be a vegetarian or I can choose to drive my car less. And, and so sometimes looking for, for some of those opportunities as we develop our plan to just amassage more on the individual connections to these things and be, just look for other opportunities to be communicating the value of the broad-scale things as well as some of the more personal initiatives.
Yeah, in my next steps, which I'll get to after everyone's been able to ask, ask their questions of Kai, is addressing some of that topic, Casey.
Great, thank you. Great. Does anyone have any more questions for Kai before we move on to Ms. Mathias? Councilwoman DeBala, did you have questions for Kai or did you want to wait?
Not specifically for Kai, and yes, I could wait, but I, just one thing about the commercial program in Philadelphia and some of the other programs that are alluded to in this report, there are examples of, with one exception, which is the single-family homes being aggressive beyond a home energy audit. With all of these, there's examples from other communities, there is draft ordinances, there's stuff to work with. It's a question, I think, of tweaking the assumptions that you all made. Like, for example, about the multifamily buildings, we've done a little more digging and have more refined numbers after talking with the, with the housing folks in Tacoma to get a better idea, what does that actually mean? And how, you know, in this kind of building as opposed to the kind of multifamily building they have in Rockville. So, so I think there's a lot of good, good specifics we can, we can use from other communities.
Well, I'll hold the rest of it.
Okay. Ms. Mathias, you want to?
Could I ask one question?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see your light. Yep, sorry.
Just one question I'll ask now. So you were saying how transportation would be a re, something that would be best addressed regionally. It does seem as if some of the building-related items that you had get into zoning, which of course goes beyond us and is regional in the sense that it's with the county, even if it's not with the entire region. So I'm just wondering how many of the things, and if this is a really long answer, you don't have to get into it now, but I, I think we need to figure out how much of it is things that we can just do for Tacoma Park versus more broadly, because, you know, the biggest one, we have to do through the state, it looks like, right? Which, and I've been to the briefing on that, and I think we've all agreed, we want to push for the community energy approach. But I just wonder, is it better just on everything? Just try to collaborate with either the county or an even bigger area?
I heard a couple of different, like, questions. I think, is it better to, I think probably on a lot of these.
I usually throw a lot of things into one.
No, it's good. I think short answer is, in many, in many of the cases that you're going to get greater benefit if you do this in collaboration with even, you know, county or, or state level. But not all of them require that. I mean, we can kind of look through individual ones on, on which, kind of, again, kind of if the, if the policy context is there, kind of what steps can be taken on an individual basis for the strategies that can be done kind of at a, on, exclusively on the local level.
And I think we'll get with that Gina's presentation.
I did have a specific question. So on the list of 18 strategies, there was some stuff about EVs.
Yes.
And did that, did that get built into the transportation strategy, one of the eight you analyzed? Or did it go to the side because we're already, the city's already doing stuff?
A little bit of both. It didn't get really, it did not, that transportation, the one that's, the eight that's there does not consider the EV. There were a couple of different, few different kind of EV, electric vehicle and kind of electrification, infrastructure and, and outreach programs that were considered. And so there was a little, this kind of consideration there. We did the prioritization matrix and kind of looked across feasibility, cost, timeline, et cetera. And so that, those are ones that didn't make it to the top eight. But those are absolutely kind of strategies that could be considered and I think would kind of, I, I think the, they're part of the report, some of the background information is available, Gina's seen that. So kind of in moving toward the implementation plan and strategy, there's kind of, there's a foundation to work from there. And then kind of your last point was, there is already some energy programs, policies around EV that's, the city is already working toward. And so that, that contributed to that was not floating to the top.
Thank you. Don't go too far. I'm sure there'll be more questions for you.
So our next steps, my next step is to start working on several things at once. One is moving the work that CADMS did into our implementation and our full comprehensive sustainability and climate action plan. And building our roadmap on how to get to our 100% reduction goal. That's going to take some time. And so while we're working on that with public engagement and with the county's efforts, we want to work on implementation of programs we can start implementing now. We don't want to wait. We don't have the time to wait because somebody set a 15-year goal for this. So one of the things that I would like to implement in the new year is a revamped green home certification program for the city. It would include everyone in the city and have new categories that build upon the previous program that we ran during the Neighborhood Energy Challenge. So not just energy efficiency, not just transportation, but a comprehensive holistic approach to sustainability that anyone working or living in the city could participate in. And I've already begun working with the Committee on the Environment on this. They are looking over the first rough draft of the checklist and thinking about ways that we might want to organize it and roll that out. I am working on the county's work group, on their buildings work group for their climate action planning. And I have a meeting this week on it. I will continue to be involved with the county to make sure that our interests are represented. So where we can push on the county to downscale. Some of the policies that CADMS evaluated for us and that I know residents in the city are advocating we pursue such as benchmarking and energy disclosure, minimum energy efficiency standards for different types of buildings. The county is considering those and is planning to pursue those. And their benchmarking law has been in effect for many years now. They're looking at downscaling it, but not to our scale. So where we can push them to downscale just a little bit more, make sure that their resources will impact our city as much as possible. And then also looking at the opportunities that we have to implement things sooner, leverage their resources, leverage what they're doing. So for example, I know that they are also talking about increasing incentives for commercial buildings and for homeowners to do energy efficiency work. So we can leverage those so we don't have to use city money. We can count that in maybe two years. We can count on some additional funds and we can use those sustainability funds from the city for a different program. So that's what I'm working on, looking at what the county is doing. Their timeline is being done, developing their plan this time next year. So they will not have their plan completed until the end of 2020. I don't know if we can work on the city's plan ahead of that. I'd like to have our plan for 100% greenhouse gas reductions before that, but I don't want to rush it because I know this needs to be a community process in a very significant and real way. So I will be working on establishing our timeline. And finally, a new action that we are exploring that I hope to have before the city manager very shortly is allowing curbside EV charging on residential streets where homeowners and renters do not have driveways. And so they cannot install EV car chargers at their residence. So working on doing that, that does not require any new code change. It can be done through a right-of-way permit process. So it should be relatively simple to do something like that. So I would take any questions if anyone has any.
Great, thank you. Going back to the, the revamped green home certification, I know you said you started working on that. Did you have, did you mention a timeline for that, putting that in place?
I did not mention a timeline. So I was hoping to have it done in January based on initial feedback from the Committee on Environment. It might take a little bit longer to get that rolled out to the public. But I think in January would be a good time to roll out the draft.
Great. And I know in the past, one of the things that you have mentioned is for the City of Tacoma Park, many, we've made so many gains of people opting into things. And our next big hurdle is making things requirements. And so when you're thinking about this home certification and our next steps, are there going to be things that you're going to come back to council with, looking to have as requirements for residents in the city?
Yeah, I think that that is where we are headed. I would expect that sometime in January to have some proposals for you to consider of what I think the city needs to do. I think that most likely it's going to be required home energy audits with a home energy score at time of real estate listing. So when a home is listed for sale in the city, we require not just a disclosure of your energy bills, but an actual home energy audit with a home energy score that gives a picture for the prospective buyer of the condition of the home irrespective of the behavior of the occupant, which is what the current disclosure ordinance requires or law in the county requires. This has been implemented across the country in several cities and we are getting good, good information that it actually improves sales. So hopefully that'll be a positive for the city. And I think that can be leveraged into a requirement for all homes at some point. Similar for commercial buildings.
Anyone else have any questions? Councilwoman DeBala?
Question, well, anybody else with questions?
No.
Yeah, this is great. And thank you for all the work that you've done, Kai, and your team. And thanks to Gina. And thank you to the Committee on the Environment and everybody else who's been helping along the way. I went to a Sustainable Maryland workshop last week and the guy that ran the workshop, the first speaker stood up and he said, with energy efficiency, aggressive energy efficiency, you can get halfway there. And that's pretty much what you said, is if we focus on the stationary, we're halfway there. He also said that energy efficiency is not, energy efficiency is not sexy, but it's effective. And he said that, that nobody ever wanted to have a photo op with a light bulb. So I'm just going to say that there are some cheap things you can do. And these came from Ace Hardware, so here you go. Anybody else wants a photo op on camera? We'll pass it around. And, and so that, that's a, that's a little gimmicky, but I don't think we've exhausted the easy stuff, even though. stuff, even though we've done so much better in this city than a lot of places around us. But if we're going to make significant progress, I think Kai and Gina and some of you have all said, we got to tackle the hard stuff. And that is going to mean talking about requirements. So I look forward to hearing what you have to say in January, some more specific proposals. There are some obvious short-term things, like the light bulbs and more on the EV chargers. And there are some obvious, difficult, but very impactful, short-term things. So for me, it's really a lot about the buildings. It's pretty much all about the buildings for me. And looking critically at how we can move other folks to do something more on transportation with us. And of course, you all saw the graph, the green, the early green bump out for community choice aggregation, despite how hard it might be to get that through at the state level, if it goes through and we can take advantage of it, it will make a huge difference. But as far as focusing on things that I'd like to see in January, as far as proposals, I've been thinking a lot about the different sectors of buildings, the commercial buildings. There's either big ones or there's small ones. But even the biggest ones aren't at the current county level, 50,000 square feet. So when Gina said she'd like to see them drop that square foot, there are no multifamily buildings in that picture right now. And where they want to go picks up very few. So then I think about the larger multifamily buildings and all of the online tools that are available for energy, collecting of energy information and how we can work with that. And then I think about the single family and the really small multifamily, the two, four units, which are all more, most of them are more like houses. So I lump them together. And I think about the residential audits with some kind of home, again, home energy score being a national program that you can plug into. So I'm thinking about it that way. And I'd really like to see us make some, consider some proposals in, later in the winter that we could, that we could run with sooner rather than later.
And I think that dovetails nicely with our Housing and Economic Development Plan that we just put in place.
That was my next line. See, the one right here that begins with an H?
Yes.
No, I really do. I feel some of this stuff is expensive.
Right.
And since it's going to be expensive and hard, we, I'd love to get double or triple duty out of it. And that's why I'm focused on buildings. Thank you.
In addition to the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan, we've also got the discussion about, you know, kind of public lands and parking and a variety of things that cross so many of these different lines. So I'm excited about the opportunities for a lot across, I don't know the right word for that, but taking advantage of all those at the same time.
Great. And I think January, coming back, is a terrific time because as, not that my colleagues know this, but one of the proposals I was going to put forward to them is, we always do our priority setting in January. And given this report and our Housing and Economic Development Plan, I'm proposing, I'm going to propose to them that we focus our priority setting meetings on really just digging in deep on these two plans. And then looking at what we, what it means for our budget coming up in this year, and then really looking at how they meld together and we can move forward. So coming back to us in January will be perfect timing on that. And I just want to reiterate, I think what my colleague, Councilwoman Kostic, said and others have said is, very much appreciate the report and the look at things. You know, stuff that's going on in the state and county, we're going to push for. I mean, we're all in on helping try and move CCA, but that, that's a big lift. And there are so many things that we need to be really focusing on and implementing and doing here. And so I look forward to figuring out what are some of the things that we can really put in place here. And as Kai said, there's some really interesting things that, and innovative projects that we can do in Tacoma Park as we're also helping folks at the state and the county level, you know, push for things. But I think we should really be focused on, in our plan, what we could, what we can get done here. Did you have something else you want to?
Yeah, I just had a question. I see a number of people in the, in the, in the room tonight who are on several of the county committees. And so that makes, I want to ask, when, when would we be taking public comment on this topic if somebody wants to say something?
You can always come and give public comment. Everyone knows that. Every Wednesday night when we have a council meeting.
Well, I mean specifically tonight, but also yes.
You could do it tonight. I know our Committee on the Environment is going to come up in a moment and speak. And so.
And we have gotten a couple of comment letters.
And we have, yes, we know someone very close to you has commented on it already. And so, but again, I mean, we will be taking public comment on this generally. People, I'm getting emails already. So people can continue to email us. I know, provide feedback to Gina, our Committee on the Environment. When it does come, when Gina does come back to us, obviously that will be noticed as all of our meetings are noticed and our agenda items. And so people will have the opportunity to come and speak the evening that Gina comes back to us or any time after that before we were to actually adopt anything. So, great. Anything else? No? All right. So I think I'm turning over the Committee on the Environment for a moment.
Thank you, members of the council. I'm John Ackley. I'm a co-chair of the Committee on the Environment. And Elizabeth will also be presenting, we'll keep this very short. And we are presenting on behalf of the subcommittee, the COE Subcommittee on Climate Action, which consists of Seth Grimes, also Michael Feldman. And we are all, I'm happy to say, we're all very much in unanimous what we think the next step should be. And honestly, a lot of it is reflected in the letter from Stephen Adell, which you've already got. We think the CADMS report provides the background we need, and now it's really time to start implementing. And getting to zero is going to take many years, but we are very excited in January that Gina will be coming back to you with things that are, as you mentioned, these things that'll be required. And we think the place to start is energy audits. Every single home and business should have an energy audit. And it only costs 100 bucks. And we know that, you know, for families that cannot afford that, that should be subsidized. So it would, in fact, it's already subsidized by the state. So I'm not even sure that's going to need to come from Tacoma Park. And the other, so home energy audits and energy score, and that score needs to be public. So that if someone's thinking of buying the house or, or others, it's one of the best ways to motivate people is through a little competition and knowing what your neighbor's got and what you got. And a higher score, honestly, gives your house a higher value. And so those, those are things that we're looking forward to most. And then ultimately, maybe in future years, we'll be able to look about requiring some minimum energy score that homes have to have. Right now, there's, the home energy score is, it's a national program developed by DOE. So it's, all the work has been done. And then there's also a multifamily energy score that applies to multifamily units over 20 units. So I don't know exactly how you're going to deal with multifamily units under 20. But we have experts in town that will help us work through that. So yeah, that's all I have to start with. I want to turn it over to Elizabeth. Thank you.
Well, I will submit our comments, but almost all of our comments have already been covered by all the great comments that you guys have had. So thank you for being an engaged and informed group that's, you know, bring so much to the table. As a group, I wanted to touch on the comment that Peter had in terms of Montgomery County. We are thrilled with all of the expertise and research that they are bringing to the conversation and are so glad that Tacoma Park supports it and agree that it doesn't quite match the scale of what we're looking at. So we want to probably continue the Tacoma Park tradition of moving ahead more quickly and showing what's possible. And all of the comments on transportation are totally in line with what we're thinking as well. Of course, that's something that we feel is super important and helps to address the diversity of lifestyles and economic backgrounds that we cherish in Tacoma Park. And so we're really glad that transportation is so high on your list and on your level of expertise. And then, of course, all the comments on the Community Choice Energy Bill and on buildings of every scale are important for us as well. So we really look forward to working with you. If there's anything in particular that we can, like, help with, that you're interested in, or we can research for you and come back to you, please just let us know. Thank you for all you're doing. And thanks to Gina and CADMS.
Great. Well, thank you all. We, we have a lot of work ahead of us. And have a great next couple of weeks. Get to work, and we'll all meet back here in January, as that sounds. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much, Gina. And everyone, all the Committee on the Environment, everyone who's had input on this, and we look forward to moving this forward. All right. Thank you. Great. All right. Where are we now? I lost my agenda. Public comments.
On voting.
On voting items. And we are exactly on time. I just want to note that the city clerk got it. Public comments on voting items. Our first voting item is a second reading ordinance approving FY20 budget amendment two. Do I have any public comments on that? Seeing none. Move on to the next. The next is a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for legal services. Any public comments on that? Council? Okay.
Good evening. Arthur David Olson, Herbie Hancock Avenue. The last time the city contracted for a city attorney, we were getting one with decades of experience in city legal matters. Even after Susan Silver retired from that role, we had a city attorney with more than 10 years of experience. We'll now be getting a city attorney with no experience in the city's legal matters. That lack of experience ought to be reflected in the new city attorney's compensation. Alas, this can't be determined from the documentation before you tonight, which does not include the current city attorney's hourly rate. The last city attorney contract included annual fee increases based on a legal services index. That was great for the city attorney, since it meant that their fees grew substantially faster than inflation. That was terrible for taxpayers, since it means our costs grew substantially faster than inflation. The document before you tonight does not include information on how annual fee increases will be determined. I hope the council will defer approval of awarding the contract to the city attorney until you can review whether the level of compensation is appropriate and until you know how annual fee increases are to be calculated. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on the single reading ordinance awarding a contract for legal services? Okay. Next is a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for stormwater system video inspection and cleaning. Then we have a resolution providing for appointments to the Parking Management Task Force. And then we have a consent agenda that includes a resolution authorizing closure of Laurel Avenue on May 2, 2020 for the Tacoma Children's Business Fair, a single reading ordinance awarding contract for an elevator retrofit, ordinance authorizing purchase of replacement vehicles, resolution setting for, which one you got there, Seth?
You passed it.
Okay, go ahead.
You thought you were going to plow right through.
It was a consent agenda, so you can talk to all of them. Go ahead.
I'm Seth Grimes, 730 Willow Avenue on Ward 1. I applaud the closure of Willow Ave, sorry, that's my own street. I applaud the closure of Laurel Avenue for the business fair. I like the, well, it's not a precedent because we have for many, many years closed Laurel Avenue as well as Ann Street more lately for farmers markets. I know that you discussed in recent months closing Laurel Avenue, perhaps on a temporary or occasional basis, for the reclaiming of space for public uses from automobiles. In the case of Laurel Avenue, there are other streets that can route traffic there. That applies to other parts of the city. So I do hope that you will bring back soon the idea of closing Laurel Avenue on an occasional, temporary, easily reversed basis to reclaim the space for public use. There are other spaces that you might consider. For instance, Grant Avenue, the stub of it coming off of 410, that could be a very good staging ground for Tacoma Junction construction when that gets underway. But you could consider closing it before and after that construction to, again, reclaim roadway space for public uses. There are other spaces throughout the city, and I would be glad to discuss that with you, but you know the city as well as I do. So once again, I support this. It's consent agenda, so you will vote for it. And I do thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Anyone else? The other items in the consent agenda is the resolution setting forth dates for the city council's holiday recess, appointment to the Board of Elections, appointment to the Council Compensation Task Force, and appointment to the Facade Advisory Board. All right. Seeing no other public comments on voting items, we'll move to our first voting item, which is the second reading ordinance approving FY20 budget amendment number two. Do I have someone moving that ordinance?
Sorry, which one?
FY budget amendment number two. Councilwoman Circe moved. Do I have a second? Councilwoman Kostic, second. There are no changes from the first reading ordinance. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar.
Aye.
Councilmember DiBala.
Aye.
Councilmember Kostic.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe.
Aye.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. All right. The next is a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for legal services. I'll just, I'm going to get that one out because it's a single reading ordinance.
I just want to clarify something there, especially based on Mr. Olson's comments. The, the title of that isn't exactly what's in your packet. This isn't actually awarding a contract. It's authorizing the mayor and order, authorizing the mayor to work on a contract.
Yes.
So there's nothing set in stone about the fees or anything like that. This just gives the council's approval to have you work on a, work with the selected firm on a contract.
Thank you.
Does the contract then come back to us, or does it just?
No.
Go ahead.
No, it does not. Unless for some reason the mayor would determine that there was an issue and want to bring it back.
Right. Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah. So do we, do we know anything at this point about the range of compensation or how it compares to the previous attorney?
It's on the cover sheet.
It's on the cover sheet.
It does not talk about the, it doesn't talk to the comparison of the, of the current attorney firm. I think that's.
Or the possible escalators, or is that part of the contract?
That's part of the proposal.
Yeah.
But I think our current city attorney's contract should be available, like, on our website even, right? Or no?
But, but it's certainly something that we can make sure that the fee information is shared.
It is on the website.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. So it's, it's public information, and we just don't have it in the cover sheet.
That's right.
But it's.
That's what I thought, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah. And each of us every month sees the city attorney's bills. So we know how much these charges are to do the comparison. Any other questions? And I just want to also clarify that the, the firm we're using now is going through a transition. So it is not just, our contract is up with them in the spring, but it is no longer going to be the same firm. And so that, there's a number of reasons why we've looked, we went out and we looked at and had an RFP, and we've stated that before. But I think also, just to go to Mr. Olson's comments, I don't think we would ever have found anyone to have the years of experience that.
In Tacoma Park.
In Tacoma Park, because this, this firm is going through a transition and will not be the same firm. So, all right. Would someone like to remove the single reading ordinance?
I'll go.
You're going to move it? Okay. Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Circe, second. It's the single reading ordinance.
You just sounded very.
I know, he never moves it. Will the clerk please call the vote?
I'm so far down the end here that sometimes I just like.
All right.
On the left, when you're sitting up here.
I vote aye. Thank you. Councilmember DiBala.
Aye.
Councilmember Kostic.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Councilmember Smith.
Abstain.
Councilmember Circe.
Aye.
Mayor Stewart.
Aye. All right. Next, we have a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for stormwater system video inspection and cleaning. Does someone like to move the single reading ordinance? Councilwoman DiBala, Councilwoman Circe, second. Any questions? All right. Seeing none, single reading ordinance. Will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar.
Aye.
Councilmember DiBala.
Aye.
Councilmember Kostic.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe.
Aye.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. All right. Next, we pulled out of the consent agenda, the.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. All right. Next, we pulled out of the consent agenda the resolution providing for appointments to the Parking Management Task Force because we had amended... Thank you to Councilwomen Dibala and Kostick. You should have it...
The information is in your blue folder.
Right. The information is in your blue folder. I will...
And we also have Ms. Grisby here if there's a question.
Okay. Great. I will just highlight the changes in the third Whereas Clause. We added "and EV vehicle and ride-sharing parking" and will take into consideration the connection between parking supply slash pricing and personal vehicle usage. The next Whereas Clause, the phrase was added, "and may include recommendations concerning sustainability and alternative uses of the public space currently devoted to vehicle parking." And the ninth Whereas Clause, in addition to... It says, "After review of the applications received, the council has selected 10 residents to serve on the Parking Management Task Force and requests that the Committee on the Environment and the Complete Safe Streets Committee each nominate for a council appointment and additional member as representative on the committee." So... And I believe that was it. All right.
Can I raise a question?
Yeah.
So in this last point with the Committee on the Environment and the Complete Safe Streets Committee each nominating a council appointment for an additional member, I wondered if we needed to have the word additional, just because we are... There is a member on here who is a member of the Complete Safe Streets Committee and I understand that that wasn't the person designated as their representative. But if they decided that that was the person they wanted to be, would they...
So just take out additional.
Yeah. Just wondering about taking out the word additional.
Yeah. Okay. That's good. So it'll just say council appointment... Each nominate for council appointment, a member. A member. And then we have the... Those who are appointed to serve, Jaclyn Davidson, Ward One, Jim Douglas, Ward One, Alan Feder, Ward Five, Teresa Gibson, Ward Three, Greg Gorman, Ward One, Timothy Judson, Ward Six, Howard Schaefer, Ward Two, Roger Schlegel, Ward Three, Emmanuel Wagner, Ward Two, and Claudia Wayne, Ward Two.
Do we need to... Can I take a moment to explain why we proposed changing some of the language?
Sure.
Just in view of having just listened to a presentation on the climate plan and listening to how the transportation emissions are half of it, about half of it, and thinking about what creative things we can do within the city, it seemed like it was important to make sure the Parking Task Force didn't just look at will you park existing cars, but look at some alternatives as well. And that's why both Casey and I separately... Councilmember Kostick and I separately noticed and asked for this.
Yep. Great. Would someone like to move the resolution as amended?
Sure.
Councilwoman Dibala, moved. Councilwoman Kostick, second. Any other conversation or comments? All those in favor of establishing a Parking Management Task Force, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right. Yay. We have the Parking Task Force. Woo. All right. Next, Consent Agenda. Lots of things. I read them out before. Who would like to move the Consent Agenda? Councilwoman Kostick, move. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Circe. Since there are Single Reading Ordinance, we have to call the vote.
Councilmember Kovar.
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala.
Aye.
Councilmember Kostick.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens. Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe.
Aye.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. All right. Now we're up to any other public comments?
What?
Go ahead. Mary Jean?
I was hoping somebody else would stay.
I know. This is it. Mary Jean, you get the final public comments of 2019. Unless Arthur wants to get back up again.
Thank you, Arthur David for being here and being in. Thank you. I'm just... I sort of feel I'm a token low-income homeowner in Tacoma Park. I've lived here for almost... Well, in Tacoma Park, 36 years, but our current house, a little over 34 years. And I just really taking consideration that people with disabilities and black families have lower incomes than the average person. And when gentrification hits us, we're the ones who get hit the hardest. And please take that in consideration. And I wish you'd do something to protect small homeowners, to protect us from the developers taking over our city. There are so many people that... I took an Uber ride. I rarely take it, but I took an Uber ride and a man who said he lived on the Maple Apartments... Up of an apartments earlier this week and he said he was looking for an affordable home in Tacoma Park. And you all say you try to look out for immigrants. This was an Uber drive. You know he didn't have much money. And I didn't want to be a Debbie Downer, but you know, there's no place that that man could have afforded a place, a home here. And why aren't you doing something to help people like us? I mean, you're doing a little bit, but it's not enough. Please. I mean... And you do things to cater more to wealthy people, even having the council. You should have... The council should be compensated more so people can do it. Because it's really a full-time job and the mayor too. So you encourage people to do it who don't have to have second jobs or already have money saved up. And there's a big loophole. I hardly got any money back for the housing credits. I got a little bit. I found out you have to include your social security income in your income. You know, I make... Live on 20... A little over 25,000 a year to pay my health insurance. Why should I include my little bit of social security to get tax credits? And if you have an IRA, it doesn't count. You can have a million dollars in your IRA and you can get a tax credit. It's really a big loophole as far as I'm concerned. And I'm sorry. I'm sorry for complaining, but Tacoma Park is just... And please help the people like Middle Eastern market that have been here for years, even longer than me. And I can actually eat something that I can afford there. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Jean.
And Happy New Year in advance.
Thank you.
Arthur, you want the very last comment of 2019?
I probably won't be as effective as Mary Jean, but I'll give it a go. Arthur David Olson, still Herbie Hancock Avenue. I'd like to congratulate the council for its work on hiring a new city attorney. Improvidently, I don't have the information that would let me do so. Earlier this year, an ad hoc volunteer committee reported its findings on legal services to the council. After that report, I can recall no public counsel consideration of the findings or decisions as to which findings to accept and which to reject. I can recall no public decisions on what principles should be used in hiring a city attorney. There may or may not have been such decisions. The public's only clue is the issued request for proposals. The document for tonight's meeting has some information about the winning proposal. There is no information about the two rejected proposals, not even the identities of the firms involved. And the public has not learned how many responses to the request for proposals there were. If there were more than three, the public has not been informed how the field was narrowed to the three firms interviewed by the council. The council has used a better process in other areas. When dealing with junction development, the council considered and decided on criteria to be used, did that in public, and respondents to the request for proposal made public presentations to the council. Going forward, I hope the council will change the process for selecting a city attorney to make it more open. For now, I hope the council will document for us how this decision was reached. We can't have government accountability without such documentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Great. Any council comments? Councilmember Smith?
Quickly, I just want to remind my colleagues, I sent out an email over the weekend. A resident in Ward Five would like the council to send a letter to some members of the County Council for them to reconsider the vehicle restrictions in the Park Valley neighborhood. I think this would be a great idea. I don't know if it's going to change overnight, but at least it would be a start. Many of these council members on the list are brand new, so they probably don't have all of the information or they're not wedded into the past decision restricting vehicles going through the Park Valley neighborhood. And the other thing I want to bring to people's attention, Essex House over the weekend only had one boiler working, so some apartments had low heat, low temperatures, so it was a very stressful time for many residents. Thank you.
Councilwoman Kostick?
Just a couple of quick announcements. First of all, next Monday, November 25th, at 6:00 PM here in the auditorium, we will have a meeting with DC Councilmember Brandon Todd to discuss the projects by Pepco and Washington Gas along Eastern Avenue. And as I understand it, there will also be an update on the progress of DDOT on their project in the same location. So I encourage people to come out. We haven't heard publicly or privately, for that matter, a whole lot of information about the Washington Gas project, so this will be a very good opportunity to find out a little more about that project and ask questions, particularly of Washington Gas, and to ask Pepco some questions about their ongoing work there as well.
And this is... Say this again. Here?
Here.
At 6:00?
6:00, next Monday.
Next Monday, November 25th.
I have a blurb in my city manager comments if you want to copy it out.
Didn't get that far. Okay. Great.
I will be at the National League of Cities Conference later this week with a number of my colleagues. And moving into December, I am going to have two office hours. One will be Monday, December 16th, from 10:00 to 11:00 AM at Tacoma Bevco. And the other will be Thursday, December 19th, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM at Spring Mill Bakery. So if you're missing the council, come visit me. Thanks.
Great. Any other council comments? Councilwoman Dibala?
Yeah. Just briefly. The... And I think Gina alluded to this, but this week, Wednesday and Thursday, there will be a climate meeting for the Metropolitan Region, for COG. The Climate and Energy Committee and a number of other folks will get together and talk and look at a bunch of data and a bunch of information about what would work at a regional level. So this is very helpful to take this information and feed it right into that starting Wednesday morning, which I think is great. I think that might be it for me. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. A few things. First of all, tomorrow night, I'll be testifying at the County Council regarding the small cell tower zoning text amendment, which was mentioned in last week's council meeting, I believe. So I'll be there. That's tomorrow night. Secondly, in the report of the phone call, and maybe the city manager can add to this if she wants, on the weekly calls that NDC makes with us, and I believe Councilmember Kostick was on the last call, there was a slight distortion of how it was described in terms of what the Historic Preservation Commission said in terms of NDC having to return to... Whether they had to return again, NDC, to make another preliminary consultation. And at the most recent HPC meeting, what the HPC chair said was they did expect or anticipate that NDC would return for a consultation regarding the back facade, which had been a concern expressed by, I think, by people in Ward Three. And I had an exchange with staff and indicated that that would be corrected because the earlier statement had been that they didn't need to come back. You know, it was very complicated. Does that seem like an accurate description to you?
I think that there have been... I think there have been changes. It was accurate when it was reported, but it is... I think they've had some discussions that it may change.
Okay.
The ultimate decision is up to the staff of the... For Historic Preservation Commission, not the commission itself. And also, I think there's some negotiation about what NDC wants too. So as soon as I get that in writing, we'll put that revised information out.
Thank you.
And I also want to clarify from the phone calls. When we had the phone call initially, two, about a week and a half ago on that Friday, that was NDC's understanding of what the process was. Then this last Friday, before this question came up, they actually clarified. And I don't think that... I don't know if those minutes from that call have gone up yet, but they clarified during that call that exactly what we said, which is that there'll be another consultation.
Okay.
Right. So it has changed back and forth several times.
All right. In any case, that will be adjusted as needed. Few other things on... I'm glad to hear about the upcoming meeting regarding Pepco's project and I'm going to try to be there. I'm not sure if I can be there. I'm going to try to be there. I do want to mention, though, several people have asked about the paving, the remainder of the section that has to be paved on Philadelphia Avenue, Route 410, from Tacoma Avenue up to Fenton in Silver Spring. That's the remaining part in Tacoma Park that hasn't been done yet. And you don't have to answer this now, but I thought I had heard at one point that there was a potential deficiency in some of the work that had been done there, which had led to it being delayed. I'm not sure, but that remains an uneven area. So that's something that...
Yeah. It's not real bad right now. I was on it today. But in terms of the actual repaving, we are checking on what the schedule is for that. I will say, Fenton through downtown Silver Spring is horrible. And so I think clearly there's going to be a lot of repair work that needs to be done.
Right. Okay. And then just two other things. I promised a few people I would mention these things. So just some of the upcoming events in Old Town, sort of connected to the holidays, on December 7th from 3:00 to 4:00. This is actually at the Presbyterian Church, is the Alternative Gift Fair. And on December 8th in Old Town, Pajama Rama, 8:00 to 11:00 AM. Might see some people walking around in their pajamas. And then on the 14th, there's two events. The DC... The Old Town Coco Crawl from 3:00 to 5:00 PM and also from 2:00 to 5:00 PM, the Tacoma Book Fair at Busboys, which is where the local authors present their books and you can purchase books from local authors for sale. And then the very last thing, since Ms. Maturi mentioned it, we did just vote on appointing the Council Compensation Committee. And one of the things we've asked them to look at this year, in addition just to the compensation itself and should it be adjusted at all, is specifically the extent to which the current structure makes it difficult for people who are potentially single parents or low-income people or just in general, does the fact that the compensation is only at a part-time level prevent lots of people from the city from contemplating serving on the city council? So that at least will be looked at. That doesn't mean it's going to transform itself into something else, but that point will at least be looked at. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Can I just sneak in one more thing about the Pepco and the Eastern Avenue meeting that I forgot to mention, which is the bright light on the substation?
Yes.
Yeah. Everybody's like... So I'll try to be there and talk to that with them if we don't hear back sooner.
Have you gotten any updates on that or no?
Darrell has not gotten an update. She asked them again today, but I'm told that over the weekend it changed back. So, maybe somebody in Prince George's got to them first. I don't know yet.
Has anyone reached out to Danny Taveras's office?
Not yet.
You might want, I mean.
Next step. Got it.
Just because if it's, people on the Prince George's side might also be complaining, and so they may, since it's on Prince George's.
Good idea, I will do that.
Reach out to her office, they may be working on it, and that might be why it changed.
Yeah. Good idea, quicker way to get an answer. Sounds good. Thank you, I will do that.
Councilwoman Circe?
So, I will just want to let everyone know that I will be at National League of Cities Conference next week, but will be responding to email as I'm able to. I do want to give a quick update on the Glen Side sidewalk project, because I know there's been lots of emails flying, and I just sent a note out on the NHGCA list serve. So, Darrell noted that the, the porous surface sections of the sidewalk, the contractor is expected to come out on Wednesday to do that. Please note that that is subject to weather and a plethora of other things, so it's possible that there may be, you know, a delay of sorts, but as of right now, they are scheduled to come out on Wednesday. I know that there were questions about the stormwater management work and the capacity of that, of the, the project. So, Ian took another look at the designs and realized there was actually an error, perhaps, on the, on the drawings. So, he is going back to the engineers just to make sure that that is just an error and not some miscalculation. So, as soon as we hear back from Ian in terms of verifying the capacity of the store, of the drainage system, we'll send the note out to everyone. But the hope is to start the work within the next couple of weeks, and so we'll start at Haverford and then work our way up to Merwood and Jackson. So, thank you, everyone, for your patience as we're continuing to kind of move this project forward. This is one that's like a substantial amount of work specifically as it relates to that stormwater management piece. So, we all agree that we want to make sure that we get it right. So, I thank all of the residents who have their eyes on, on getting this project completed, so. Also, want to, because we're not going to be back, so the, the Crossroads will have a Crossroads Holiday Market, and it is going to be on December the 15th from 11:00 until 3:00. And they will be near the, the rec center, so some of the green space just outside of the rec center. So, should be lots of vendors, lots of fun stuff. If you're looking for some holiday treats, definitely go out and take a look. Also, next week, on Wednesday, will be the Crossroads Farmer's Market pre-Thanksgiving fest. So, definitely want to encourage folks to come out to the Farmer's Market on Wednesday, get some of that extra stuff that you will likely need for, for Thanksgiving dinner on Thursday. Do a little dancing and some, and support some of the, the local vendors. So, that's all I have. Thanks.
Great. I have just a couple of things. On Sunday, I was able to, with Small Things Matter, distribute food at Rolling Terrace Elementary School. I just want to thank everyone involved with Small Things Matters. They do this at different locations, Rolling Terrace is one, and they also do it at Hampshire Towers, and I was glad to join a local Girl Scout troop doing that on Sunday. And then Sunday evening, the Tacoma Park Seventh Day Adventist Church, their youth ministries held their Thanksgiving dinner. And according to the, the folks that came, I think we had over 400 people in and out this year. It was, and there had more closed distribution than they've had in the past, and a lot of transportation to folks going to Progress Place and bringing people over. And so, it was, it was a very, it was a great event. I was glad to be able to participate in that. And I will also be at the National League of Cities this week. I co-chair the Racial Equity and Leadership Council, and also, as I mentioned last week, Saturday morning, we, I will be on a panel with the mayor pro tem from Dallas, city council person from Boston, and one from Peoria, talking about housing and racial equity. So, I look forward to seeing my colleagues in the National League of Cities and other people, and we are adjourned. Oh, oh, my God, I'm sorry. I was like so anxious.
I'll try to be fast.
All right, you go, sorry. I was like, oh, it's almost 10.
I'll be, I'll be quick. We did mention the, the cross jurisdictional meeting, and because that actually took a lot to get it announced, I wanted to at least have a blurb that you can share. I, I put a couple pictures in here, three pictures of recent library events. When you want examples of why we need more space for the library, their programs are bursting the facility to the seams, and some of them recently were really, over 100 people each. One, the mayor was at, joining author Andrea Beatty for the introduction of her new picture book, Sofia Valdez, Future Prez. And I remember the other day, some kids reading it, and it is a cute book. So, if you're looking for a book for, for kids, that's a great book. And then on November 12th, Min Lee, who lived in Tacoma Park until the day after his, till, till November 13th, presented his latest book, The Perfect Seat, and he had so many people come out on that. He's done some really nice books. They've had a program there tonight, I mean, just moving it through. So, I'm hoping that as we talk to various officials, we have lots of push to say, look, this is a service that just isn't comparable to what happens in other public libraries, and it's, so it's really special to be here. I do have a hiring update, please let anybody know to look at the careers page, and please let any other jurisdiction know that they cannot steal my staff. Just can't. And finally, a number of you have mentioned local market things. As the holiday season comes up, shop local. We've got wonderful things throughout the city and nearby, and enjoy the holidays.
Thank you very much, and we are adjourned.